Rather than join in, thank you very much indeed. Let's move on then. Minutes of the last meeting, they have been available, whether you've been able to get them for the last half hours, you wish that I sign them at the end of the meeting?
Agreed.
Apologies for absence, Emma.
No apologies received.
Declarations of interest, Emma?
None before the meeting, but I believe Farnham Town Council has declared a non-buccaneer interest.
Yeah, councillor Ward, do you have another interest?
Yes, very, very vague one, but my wife is vice chairman of Abbeyfield Care Home, which for the item about the car park, she's on the other side of the Hatchmill Bridge, where you're diverting her road.
Well, I'm glad you declared the interest. I'm not quite sure whether you have one, but it's always better to be her on the safe side, isn't it? Any questions from the public, Emma?
None, Steve, chairman.
Any relevant updates, Steve, to government legislation or guide?
None to report to this meeting, chairman.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, this is our new regular feature, the performance against government targets, and once again, it's Steve who's going to be talking us through this.
Thank you, chairman, thank you, members. Yes, if I can take you to page five of your order papers, and you'll see there a table setting out how Waverley has been performing in respect of the government's performance targets, and those are the performance targets which feed into decisions of whether local authorities are designated as poorly performing or not. You've got two separate tables there, one dealing with the government's targets on speed, so that's simply the determination rates for applications in the majors and non-majors category. If I take the majors first, you'll see the government target is for a minimum of 60% of major applications to be determined on time, and Waverley's performance is up, knocking 98%, which is a tremendous testament to the hard work of all your officers, and certainly puts us up there in the upper echelons nationally in terms of performance in that regard. For non-majors, the target is slightly higher, 70%, and again, you can see there that Waverley's performance is 75, sorry, 97, 75, I don't know where I got that from, 97 and a half percent, and again, excellent performance reflects very well on the hard work of all your team, so comfortably performing on those two specific criteria. Turning to the performance on quality, now the government's interpretation of quality there is how many appeal overturns do you have as a proportion of the total decisions you make in a given category? If I start with the non-majors, so what the target there is, you want less than 10% of your total decisions on non-major applications to be overturned at appeal, there are a lot of decisions we make in the non-major category, a relatively small proportion go to appeal, and a relatively smaller proportion again are overturned, and you can see the final figure there for the assessment period is 1.56%, so well within the target there. The position as regards quality performance on majors, however, is one which I think members are probably aware of and is one that we need to keep under scrutiny. So there's relatively less of those applications to begin with, and obviously, as a borough, we've had a lot of major applications, a number of which have gone to appeal, and there have been a number of overturns as we have seen. For the assessment period running from the 1st of April to the 31st of March, which is the assessment period that the government's been using, what it's allowed for is nine months after the 31st of March to allow any outstanding appeals against decisions made in that period to see their way through PINS, through the Planning Inspectorate. For Waverley, it's complicated. We've had 10 applications that have not found their way to a decision from the Planning Inspectorate yet, as at the end of December last year. So what you've got presented in the papers is an interim position, and if the government was to guillotine the statistics at the end of December, we would be sat there at 6.4%, which is comfortably within the 10% target. What we don't know, however, is whether that is actually going to be the case. We've got 10 decisions outstanding, as at the end of December, two have come in since then, they've both been allowed, so if we were to run the statistics again today, clearly we're getting nearer that 10% threshold, and we've still got eight still to come in. So this is something we need to keep under review as officers, it's something that as members you need to have in your mind when you're making decisions on major applications. We will give you the updated position, once the government confirms it, as to whether or not those outstanding appeal decisions will or won't feed into our statistics for this particular measure, and we're expecting also to get the next assessment period rolled out in the fairly near future, and as this is a standing item at all committees, I'll be able to update you accordingly as the weeks and months roll by.
Happy to take any questions, chairman.
Thank you, Steve. In my rush to get through this meeting, or start it at least, I forgot to introduce the officers, so could I just do that before I take questions? Could somebody, I do apologise. So Steve Weavey, you've just seen performing, our interim head of development control, Louise Jandell, the area team leader for Southern and Western, the three hard-working planning officers taking us through tonight, Kayleigh Taylor, Rachel Kellis and Chris Turner, and facing me is Barry Devlin from the legal team, so I do apologise for not introducing you earlier. I don't really want a great long debate on this, simply because we are so late in starting, but councillor Frost, you wish to speak?
Thank you, chairman, it's just that this particular item, I keep bringing up in one form or another, and I hear what the officer says, that when we make a decision, we have to keep in mind that we could lose and we could end up with, I'm sorry, we are here as a planning authority, and as far as I am concerned, I am here reading the papers, reading all the information in front of me, and I am not going to rubber stamp an application for the sake of what the government says. However, what I would like to know, and what I asked for originally, was when you get this 6.40% on majors, forget the others, I would like to know how many of the officers' decisions committee overturned, and how many were supported by the inspector? Because the impression keeps being given that what bad boys the members are because we keep overturning things. Well, I'm sorry, I want a bit more information. You don't have to do it now, but you know where I'm coming from, Jim.
Thank you, councillor Frost, yes, and Steve's been writing that down as you speak, so I'm sure that information will be coming your way. Can we move on to the matters in question now? As I say, it's an interesting topic, but one I think that's going to run and run. In the event of any site inspections arising from tonight's meeting, they will be held on the 27th of February, at a time agreed. We have no applications subject to public speaking tonight, so moving straight on to application B1, certain properties, you'll understand why it's listed like that when Kayleigh gives the presentation, at Talbot Road in Farnham. Thank you, Kayleigh.
Thank you, chairman. This application has been brought before the area committee because the applicant is Waverley Borough Council. The application site is located to the south-west of Talbot Road and comprises masonettes, some of which are Waverley-owned. These photographs show some of the masonettes subject to this planning application. And this plan shows the typical elevations of the masonettes. There are currently two window types existing, officers note that all of the existing windows are clearly glazed. The proposal seeks to replace existing windows with UPVC windows. So the determining issues are: the impact on ancient woodland, potentially contaminated land, and the effect on the SPAs. The matters of which planning judgment which councillors are asked to consider this evening are: the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, members. I think the three pictures on page nine test us all a little bit, I can understand the difference between aluminium and PVC, but after that I get a bit confused. Members, does anyone wish to speak to this, or can we move straight to the recommendation? Councillor Hargreaves?
As well councillor, I know this road extremely well, I spent the first year of my being a councillor in it, because we had all the problems with the windows, kitchens, bathrooms, you name it, and that was there. I'm utterly delighted. Thank you.
Councillor Hyman?
Very quickly, condition one on page 16 is the plan numbers. I notice there are 15 properties which are having these windows put in, and I assume that the ones that are not, I'm sure officers will correct me if I'm wrong, the ones that aren't having windows done are probably leaseholders who may have had them done otherwise or don't want to pay. But do these plans, can you just assure us that the plans tie the works to the stated properties, because I can't see from this that it does, but I assume one of the officers can just say yes if they know that, that the plans do tie it to the properties which we're granting permission for?
Can I answer that, Kayleigh?
Yes, on the plans, it identifies which properties are subject to the planning applications.
Can we move straight to the recommendation then? Yeah, oh, that's right, I thought you wanted to come back, I couldn't think what on earth your second question was going to be, but right, you move straight to the recommendation then. That permission be granted, subject to the conditions one and two, and the informatives that are on page 16 of your report. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission?
Thank you, chairman. This application has also been brought before the area committee, as the applicant is Waverley Borough Council. The site is located to the north-east of Mike Hawthorn Drive and comprises a public car park. The river Way runs adjacent to the south-eastern boundary of the site. These photographs show the existing site, and the proposal seeks resurfacing of the car park and reconfiguration of parking spaces, the creation of an access road to Hatchmill Bridge with bollards adjacent, just seen here, and the relocation of the height barrier from here to here, and minor relocation of lighting and the ticket machine. The matters of principle and technical judgment are: potentially contaminated land, impact on air quality, impact on highways and parking provision, impact on trees, flooding and drainage, and the effect on the SPA. The matters of planning judgment are: the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Please can I refer members' attention to the update sheet. Since the publication of the agenda, the applicant's agent has responded to the initial comments made by the lead local flood authority dated the 11th of December 2017. They state that submitted flood risk assessment dated March 2013 is not applicable to this application and was used to support the adjacent site. The proposal seeks minor development, as the site measures 0.275 hectares. However, officers had noted this prior to the publication of the agenda, and the lead local flood authority's original comments did not relate to the current proposal. As such, revised comments from the lead local flood authority were received on the 10th of January 2018, raising no objection. The recommendation remains set out on page 31 of the agenda, that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to six. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, Kayleigh. Members? Councillor Hyman? Councillor MacLeod?
Thank you, chairman. Just a couple of questions, if I may, to the officers. I wonder if you could comment on Farnham Town Council's comments on page 22, their apparent concern about surface water going into the river and possible contaminants, because I believe previously it was a contaminated site. I think you mentioned lighting briefly in your presentation, it's just an observation that this particular car park seems to be tremendously lit up, whenever you go into it, it's very, I don't know if that bothers the neighbours or anything, if I lived near it, it would bother me, but maybe nobody lives near enough, so just a couple of questions and comments, if I may.
Thank you, officers. Can you answer us straight away? Yes, thank you, Louise.
Thank you, chairman. With regards to the comment on contamination, we have got a recommended condition, which is condition number two on page 31 of the agenda, and that requires an investigation and remediation scheme to be submitted and approved in writing by the local authority and carried out prior to the commencement of development, so we're satisfied that land contamination can be achieved on site. With regards to runoff into the river, obviously the two are slightly linked, but the proposed site is hard-surfaced at present, it is not increasing the amount of hard surfacing, so any runoff would be similar. They are proposing to link into the existing drainage system as part of Riverside Three, which is the temporary car park adjacent to the site. Obviously, that is a temporary permission, and so is required to be removed by either 13th of November 2019 or within six months of the completion of the Brightwell scheme. In that event, there's a condition on that consent which requires the land to be restored in accordance with a scheme to be submitted and approved by the local planning authority. Effectively, what you would expect is that either the entire scheme is removed, so the hard standing for the car park and the drainage strategy, in which case this proposed car park would run off in a similar position to what it does now with the same amount of hard standing, or that that scheme for restoration could include the retention of that sustainable drainage scheme. In either event, the proposal would not result in a worse situation than exists at present. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, chairman. Most of the statements in here, this development is fairly straightforward, most of the statements in the officer reports, I'm perfectly happy with, impacts on traffic and the spa and all that sort of thing, we simply don't need to consider. I appreciate very much that Louise has just given you a rundown of one of the issues that I've raised with officers, which is that we're being asked to grant a permanent consent here, yet this drainage strategy is entirely dependent upon a temporary consent. You understand that there is a temporary consent on the other scheme, and that we're using that drainage system, and this is a permanent, so you know, I'm not happy with that, I understand what the officer's explanation on that, but I still think in principle that we cannot tie a temporary consent to a temporary one in that way, but that's not a killer issue, as far as I'm concerned here, by any means. I am concerned about the contamination, this is like the scheme next door, Riverside Three, which took a long time to go through, a lot of hold-ups and a lot of problems, because it hadn't been planned in advance sufficiently, it involves taking out a foot or more of the ground. I'd like officers to confirm if they would, for members, it is going to involve taking at least a foot of the contaminated soil, we know from test pits from many years ago, 2003 to 2012, lots of different contamination reports by Hyder Consulting, Parsons Brinkhoff, all the other companies got involved at some point, but I want to know, are we going to be removing the contaminated soils like we did on the other sites, when we find, we know they're there, is it going to cost us a long time to remove that soil out of the way, and can we make sure, obviously, that we've got access to Hatchmill in the meantime, and to the car park, I just assume there's going to be a construction access statement that'll take care of that? The main issue here, as far as I'm concerned, is that we do, there is a problem here, which I've discussed with officers, we do have to consider the effects upon and the cumulative effects with adjacent developments, that's beyond doubt, we all know we have to do that, we cannot treat this totally in isolation. Whether we consider it EIA or not is perhaps an argument for another day, but obviously it's being linked through the sud system of an EIA development, there's not much, and in view of the Secretary of State's screening direction in 2014, there's a very strong argument that this should have a flood risk assessment, and that we should be looking at it a little bit deeper. But what we need to know, if we're going to consider the effects upon and cumulative effects with adjacent developments, is what are the effects of collecting and redirecting all the surface water from this part of the site, from Riverside Two, at the moment it goes to the river? We're going to take it, put it in through the drainage system and the sud system for the adjacent site, which is the EIA development, and so we need to know whether it's...
Can we get some answers to both those questions?
Well, I was just about to finish, and then I'll be done, thank you, chairman, if you don't mind. So you know, we know we've got to consider that, we know that we've got to, that we need to assess the effect on the adjacent sud system, whether it can cope with the volume, there would presumably need to be hydraulic modelling, normally is. Was it designed to take this level? Certainly not, because I've checked the documents. Do we need to assess and consider it? Yes. Can we do so? No. So I'm going to suggest we defer until we get that information and can re-concentre with the LLFA, who I spent quite some time on the phone to this morning.
Right, sorry, councillor Hyman?
Well, there was just one other issue, if you turn to page 25, in the middle of page 25, you'll see that it says, "Overall, the work should provide an improvement in groundwater quality once finished, due to reduction in permeability, oblique runoff of surface waters." Reduction in permeability and runoff of surface waters are contradictory, it can't be both, they are self-contradictory, so that's another issue that we really need to look into. There are plenty of other issues, but as far as I'm concerned, the only one we need to consider tonight is that we do need to consider the in combination effects, we can't do so because the documentation isn't there, the flood risk assessment sent to LLFA was out of date, which our consultants...
Can we let the officers answer some of the questions then, please, about the removal of the soil and the sud system? Who's going to take this? Louise?
So the first issue in relation to the removal of a foot of soil, we don't know the details of the remediation scheme, that is to be submitted to us as part of condition two, after an investigation has taken place, so that investigation will inform the remediation. It could require the removal of soils, or they could be remediated in a different way, or it might not be required to be remediated, it's that investigation that informs that. If members were particularly concerned about access and vehicular movements, then we could add to condition five to submit full details of those access arrangements during construction and during the contamination remediation, that should cover that issue. And finally, with regards to EIA, the proposal in itself is not Schedule Two development, and the environmental impacts are not so significant to warrant EIA, furthermore, the proposal is not considered to be a subsequent development for the purposes of EIA, and the environmental impacts from the temporary car park scheme and the Brightwell scheme itself have already been mitigated as part of those schemes, and as such, there are not considered to be any in combination significant environmental impacts, and I don't know whether Barry wants to add anything to that.
Madam Chairman, this case law, which clearly indicates if the revised proposal would inevitably be the same in terms of assessment, EIA assessment, the authority was able to conclude, original screening, original assessment is competent for further development in modified form, and therefore previous EIA assessment can be relied on in this matter, madam.
Thank you very much, I hope that's given members enough...
CBRE Lionbrook 2014, if you wish to consult it, councillor.
Thank you very much, I'm going to take somebody else, councillor Hyman, you've had a good say, councillor Hill?
So I wanted to make, I wanted to...
Yes, you can come back.
Raise a motion to defer.
You can come back. A motion to defer, if you have a second.
Do I have a second?
I'm happy to second it, so it can be discussed by members.
All right, can I see all those, please, in favour of a deferral?
Sorry, we need to speak to it first of all.
Oh, sorry, I thought you'd already done that.
It's very simple, it's very simple, well, I thank Barry Devlin for his comments there, I understand the point that he's making, particularly in respect of the, if the impacts have already been assessed, then that's fine. Of course, it was scoped out, if you look at your documents, when you see in your planning history of this, you'll see that...
Are you speaking to the deferman? Because this sounds to me as if you're speaking to the substantive...
Yes, I am, because what Mr. Hyman is saying is that there's no need to defer this because this has already been covered, and what I'm saying is that if you look at on page 20, your list of past applications here, the planning history, there were three screening opinions that aren't mentioned here, there was a screening direction that wasn't mentioned here.
So, Hyman, we have all read our papers, and we have got a motion for deferment, and I want to go ahead and vote on that deferment.
Yes, madam chairman, thank you.
Then we can decide whether or not people are in favour of a deferment or not.
This is in respect of the states in here, the request for a screening opinion, the scoping opinion actually scoped out the contamination and the flood risk, so they were never considered actually in the EIA for what we call the Riverside Three car park, so I don't think the argument that's been forward there stands, which is why I'm arguing for deferment, and the whole point is, we have to consider the effects upon and cumulative effects, and we cannot do so without a report saying so, so we should, we must defer in terms of what we are expected to do in our decision-making.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman. Shall we move then to a vote on the deferment, unless the second wishes to speak as well? Right, can I see all those, please, in favour of a deferment? And all those opposed to a deferment and wishing to sort this out this evening? In that case, that motion is not carried, oh, sorry, John, oh, one abstention, I do apologise, I always forget abstentions, right. So moving on then to the main argument, does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Hill?
Madam Chairman, this is in my ward, and I have to say that I'm extremely pleased to see this very worthwhile improvement to a very large car park, and I'm also very glad that Waverley has been able to find the not insubstantial funds in difficult times to carry out this work, so I support it.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Does any other councillor wish to speak before we move to the main recommendation? Gosh, every time you move, I think you're going to speak. Right, okay then, shall we...
I was going to say, Louise mentioned something about...
She did, an extra, yes. Can you just remind us, Louise, it was to add something to condition five about access during the works? Can you just remind us of the wording?
Yeah, so if members are concerned about the access during the contamination remediation and the construction, they could add effectively a C to condition five for details of the access arrangements during construction and during remediation.
Right, has everyone followed that? That's a little C added to condition five. So moving to the recommendation then, the recommendation, subject to conditions one to six, that's including the revised condition five and informatives one to five, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
One, two, that would be 11.
Can I see all those against granting permission?
One.
And abstentions, won't forget this time, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on then to item B3, certainly a varied programme tonight, isn't it? This is the land at the end of the cul-de-sac, the north-west side of Three Stiles Road in Farnham, the erection of a detached dwelling and garage with associated landscaping, and the officer this time is Rachel Kellis, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'll start by showing you the location plan and aerial view, you'll see we're talking about a site at the end of a cul-de-sac just here, and you'll see from the aerial photo just next door, you've got open fields just beyond... And you'll see from the aerial photo just next door, you've got open fields just beyond that. It's worth noting the site does fall within the built-up area boundary in the Farnham neighbourhood plan. And as I'll go on to explain, you may well remember the site from committee on a number of previous occasions. And I'll talk through that history a bit more as we go through the presentation. To begin with, the proposed block plan, the proposal is for a detached dwelling. You'll see that positioned fairly centrally in the site, but also set well back, particularly relative to its neighbouring property, number 29, just next door. And you'll also see a proposed detached garage at the rear of the site. What I've got on here, you've got two block plans, so there's a comparison here with the previously approved scheme. A few small differences between that proposal. This is what was approved previously, again, a detached dwelling and also garage. The changes from that proposal are the addition of a ground floor utility room that measures around eight square metres just here. And the other change is that the proposed garage would be of an enlarged size and also located further back in the plot just here. You'll see that would be just opposite a garage next door at number 29. Here, this you can see is the proposed street scene. This is a proposed dwelling just here. What you can see here is it would be well set back from the street scene, particularly in comparison with neighbouring properties. On the bottom, slightly more faint, but you should be able to see it still, is the previously approved scheme. So the differences to point out to you are this small utility room just here on the side. And also you'll notice a change to the garage form. You've got the hip roof, the half-hipped roof as opposed to the pitched roof you see just here. What you can't see so well from this picture is how far set back that garage is relative to the previous approval. These are the proposed elevations and these circles just indicate the changes from that previously approved. So this is the additional utility room at ground floor level. You'll see that on the front elevation just here. This is the rear elevation and also on the east side elevation just here. These are the proposed floor plans for the dwelling. And again, the key change to point out to you here is that utility room. These are the proposed garage plans. You will see that it includes both a ground floor and also some habitable space within the roof. The proposed dormer would face towards the rear of the site, with this being the front elevation with some small roof lights in it. I'll take you through some site photographs. Starting on the top right, this is standing at the rear of the site looking down. You'll see the neighbouring property number 29 on the right-hand side. What you can also start to see is the slope of the site, so it rises towards the rear of the site. There's a further view beneath of the neighbouring property number 29. And you'll see on the bottom left, that's the construction fencing which at the moment marks the front boundary of the site. On the top left, that's the temporary structure on the site until the works for the new dwelling are progressed, which you can see just here. A few further photographs to show you. You'll see the central and side-facing windows on the neighbouring property. In terms of the impact on that dwelling, really are in a very similar position to what's been previously considered. The key change in terms of the impact on that dwelling is the movement of the garage further rear in the site. The garage would actually be, you'll see in this photograph, that there is a similar garage structure in the next-door property. The proposed garage would be more or less in line with that, where my cursor is about here. The photo is taken from quite low down in the site, that's where you can only just see the top of it just there. Turning to the bottom right photograph and left photograph, these are street scenes. On the bottom left, looking up along the cul-de-sac, you can get a feel for the sort of mixed variety of housing that you, along Three Stiles Road. On the right-hand side, you're looking towards open fields to the east. And also you can see the application site on entrance on the left just here. Take you through the determining issues. The proposal is for a new dwelling and garage as a fresh standalone permission, however that previous permission on the site is highly material. So in terms of the principle of development, whilst noting it's in the built-up area boundary of Farnham, the principle of development of a new dwelling has been established by those previous permissions on site. Highway safety and parking, adequate parking would be provided on site such to meet the council standards unless no objections raised from highway safety, subject to appropriate conditions. We have an appropriate legal agreement which mitigates the impact of the development on the SBA. Turning to the matters of judgment, it's members to consider the impact on visual amenity and the countryside beyond the green belt. I'd encourage to focus upon the key changes to the proposal from that previously approved, namely the garage towards the rear of the site and that side utility room which is added to the dwelling. In addition, the impact on residential amenity, the key property to consider here is the neighbour number 29, immediately adjacent. The key points to consider are the repositioning of that garage further, further rear of the site, pulls it further away from that dwelling. The elevation of the dwelling itself, that remains the same as previously approved. If I can now turn members' attention to the update sheet. We've had two further letters in, one from the agent in support of the application and one also from the neighbouring property. The issues in those letters have been largely addressed within the agenda report, but what might be helpful, I have provided some clarification on the size and measurements in comparison with the previous one, just to clarify, following the measurements which were quoted in the letter of objection and also from the agent. So there is that clarification there if you want to take a look at that. In addition, since the publication of the agenda report, a completed legal agreement has been received and completed and that's in line with the avoidance strategy to mitigate the effect on the Thames Basin Heaths SBA. As a result of that, recommendation B, which covered refusal in the event that a 106 agreement was not completed, is removed from the recommendation. That now leaves us with a revised, one revised recommendation, that is that subject to conditions one to eight and informative one to six, that permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Can I just make something clear before I open it up to members? This is a long-standing, as we know, site and it was not originally inside the built-up area boundary of the neighbourhood plan. It was only when it was allowed on appeal and the principle of development on that site that the neighbourhood plan was amended to include this site. That's what we did for the neighbourhood plan boundary, sites that had existing development on it or sites that, you know, were put forward for development. So I just really want to make that clear because it sounded very much as though we had deliberately come along and drawn this little square, but it wasn't that. We as a committee for a long time fought development on this site, but the principle has now been set. So can I just remind members when they're talking about this site tonight? Sorry to just put that in, Rachel, it was just, you mentioned it so many times and it did sound a bit bizarre. Thank you, members. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I thank you very much for that explanation. I think that was necessary. This, I think, is about being consistent in applying the principles and one of the issues that we've got here, obviously, we've got two sides of the story. Number 29, who are the neighbours, are naturally, as they're entitled to, object to the scheme and want the most modest development next to them as anybody probably would. And on the other side, we've got the developer and a couple of people who they know and that are perfectly happy with it. And I understand quite a lot of the neighbours along that road are quite happy with what's in front of us. But this is about, it came, we made a decision last time, which was that we would ensure that any further creep growth in this would have to come in front of us and we remove the development, the permitted development rights. And when this came back up, obviously, you know the situation where we have to call things in very quickly without really knowing everything about them. Both councillor Williamson and myself separately were asked to call it in and did. I'm glad we did because there are a couple of issues with the conditions at the end where there's been some mistakes, small mistakes in carrying them over from the last document. So at the very least, we'll make sure we get that right, which wouldn't have happened if it hadn't come before us. One of the main concerns here to me, it's not all about whether this is the same size as number 29's place or whatever, it's about the prominence of this in terms of the AGLV. And I've been through this document and the officer report, I cannot see AGLV mentioned once. And to me, it's the most important thing and I don't know whether I'm wrong or whether it just hasn't been considered again. It's been considered before, but the whole point is that you would expect that whatever property is right up against the AGLV is going to, needs to be smaller than other developments. And the incremental increase that we've seen through the planning system, whilst the developer's perfectly entitled to do it, and, you know, to some extent, an Englishman's home is his castle, we should allow them to do whatever they can if they don't upset other people's standards, standards of living. We've got to draw the line at some point. We are entitled to, the inspector would expect us to, and the inspector could not go against us drawing a line unless we were being completely unreasonable about it. What we've got in front of us is a two-bay, single-storey garage now increased to three-bay, two-story. And I can understand the neighbours thinking, well, you know, that's going a bit beyond. And it appears that the applicant had forgotten to include a utility room and obviously they could have put that into, inside the house but want to add on to it. It's not much of an increase in terms of the utility room, but it is on the side that faces the AGLV. And so I'm happy for it to be put in front of members to see what they feel in respect of the impact on the AGLV and whether we're going to draw a line, as we thought we'd probably done last time, saying that it's got to come back to us if you want to increase this in any way. If I can turn to the conditions very quickly, Madam Chairman, because that's where I've seen a couple of mistakes. The old condition five, if I can find myself to, on page 53 of the papers in front of you, oh, we've got condition four, so on the top, it is, there it is, condition five is at the bottom of page 53. This is the condition that was added last time as condition eight, but this has become five. But we've missed out condition five that was there before. And that was the condition which says that we can't change the windows on the number 29 side, on the western side. And we need to put that back in. It's all agreed. We need to bosh that back in again. The wording, if you want, I'll give you, but I think you can, officers can do it out of, it is that no windows, dormer windows or other openings other than those expressly authorised by this permission should be constructed in the side southwest elevation without the written permission of the local planning authority and the reason is for protect, to protect the privacy of neighbouring properties and to accord with D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002.
Let's get the officer just to answer that, make sure that we are covering the time.
Thank you, yes. You're quite correct, it is a different condition to what was there originally in terms of condition five. What it specifically seeks to restrict is Class A. That does include alterations to elevations, which does include windows. So whilst it's worded in a different way, would still provide that protection to a neighbouring property. That said, if you, to make it clearer and more strongly worded, I suppose, we could add some clarification that there should be no further windows to that side of the elevation.
The previous was expressly authorised in respect of windows, so I think perhaps we ought to stick with that because it's very important to the neighbours.
Yeah, that is covered, but we can add those words as well, so it's clear.
Well, if other members can let us know about that later, they're happy with that. The other one was the new condition eight, as it stands here, which is, the old condition eight required a construction transport management plan. That's no longer in there. Can I assume that that's been discharged? Or can we put that back in again, please? If we, because that's not in there.
Vehicles, it's normal one, standard condition.
Yeah, so that's been missed out. And can, condition-
Can you stop and let Rachel answer that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for the question, councillor Hyman. Yes, it is not in there. The reason for that is it wasn't something that was recommended to us by the highway authority and it can be considered excessive for one dwelling. However, if you feel it necessary, we can add that condition back in should you choose to do so.
Thanks. I think the inspector put it in in the first place, didn't he? Or it was, it went through the appeal system, so I don't think there's any reason we shouldn't have that in there. And the new condition eight that we've got in here is that the garage hereby permitted shall be used for purposes ancillary to the occupation of the dwelling hereby permitted only. At no time shall the garage be used for commercial purposes or primary habitable accommodation. Now, we've got an SBA issue here where we charge according to the amount, number of bedrooms there are. I think we should remove the word primary if the other members are, because it cannot be used for habitable accommodation. Primary allows a weigh-in for people to argue that, well, it's not a primary bedroom or whatever. And we're not allowed to do that because of how our SBA charging system works.
Can I stop you again? I've got, councillor Frost wants to speak, but I've also got, have you got an answer to that, officers? Moving the word primary?
Thank you, yes. They're actually paying as a new dwelling the maximum contribution they would need to for the impact on the SBA. It's a four-bedroom property, so that has been covered. By removing the reference to primary habitable accommodation, you are quite restricting what they can do in terms of ancillary space at that first floor. As I say, obviously not considered, there would be an adverse impact on the SBA for having an additional bedroom created there. So we suggest that that would not be necessary to restrict.
Okay. Can I take councillor Frost, please? Because we-
Thank you, Chairman. It is really in support of what councillor Hyman has just said, because I had marked the word primary on my papers. I'm very unhappy about the word primary, because when I first looked at the drawings that we had here, I could see suddenly this garage, which was quite close to the house, which is where we all normally like our garages, suddenly right the way down the end of the garden, which I couldn't see it being used too much as a garage because nobody was going to walk that far. And I'm just concerned that it will suddenly turn into a little bungalow. And therefore I would like to see the word primary taken out of that condition.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Officers, is that possible and does it make any difference?
That's not, one of the tests we have to meet for conditions is that they are necessary and that condition in officers' view wouldn't meet that test. The reason being is that if this is used as an independent bungalow, that would require express planning permission in its own right. So should this be used as an independent dwelling, we could take enforcement action against them and it would require planning permission. Thank you.
Chairman, can I just get some legal advice on that issue? Because I'm absolutely certain that in many other cases and all around the SBAs, that it has been established that, I mean, even for instance, studies, this property has a large study involved. Anything that can be a bedroom, you have to charge for. Now, we're only charging for four bedrooms here. We could charge for five, we should be charging for five. If this can have further bedrooms, it should not say primary, it's just a matter of law. And I'd like Mr. Devlin to comment on that if possible, because-
I'll take his word on the matter of law rather than yours at the moment, councillor Hyman. So could you just advise us?
Madam Chairman, my understanding, briefly consulting with colleagues, planning colleagues, is that the maximum charge has been levied through-
I'm sorry, but I cannot, I'm sorry councillor Hyman, I cannot have officers being interrupted when they're giving us professional advice on which we are supposed to make quasi-judicial decisions. It is just unacceptable behaviour. I'm sorry, councillor.
I apologise, but I had commented on that already and pointed out that-
I'm sorry, I'm going to hear from the officer. I don't want to hear from you until I've heard from the officer. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, just to finish, consulting planning colleagues, they confirm to me that the unilateral undertaking levies the maximum charge in terms of bedrooms. So no more money could be levied in this regard.
more money could be levied in this regard.
Thank you, Mr Devlin. Councillor Ward?
Thank you, madam chairman. Two points. The subject of primary or whatever accommodation, I'm not greatly concerned about the levy, but I would be rather concerned if suddenly two permanent bedrooms popped up there, because I understand it's slightly higher than the house and would be overlooking the garden next door. So I would be actually quite glad to see the back of the word primary. I'm a little concerned about the distances from the boundary. Could someone tell me how far they are from the boundary of the neighbouring property and the open country on the left? And are they within our normal, whatever they are, conditions? Because I seem to remember having great difficulty with another house not that far away, where we insisted on three-metre spacing from the house next door, and that doesn't look like three metres to me.
Thank you, councillor Ward, I'm sure the officers, have you got an instant answer? Does anybody else wish to add anything while the officers are, oh, you've got one, Louise, thank you.
I think the garage is closer than three metres from the boundary, but it is positioned right at the rear of the garden and adjacent to the garage on the adjacent property, so as such, we do not consider there to be an overbearing impact, which is the reason behind that three metre guidance. So where there is exceptions like this, that guidance should be relaxed. Thank you.
And I have to say, having done several site visits here, it does sit much better than the one that was originally consented, which did seem to be right in the face of the adjoining property, so I think this is an improvement. Councillor Ward?
So there are no residential properties that side, obviously is open countryside, so we do not have any guidance in respect of that. It's really a judgement on visual amenity as to whether you consider it appears visually acceptable from that location. In this respect, the addition is a small, single-storey utility room that in officers' view doesn't affect the overall appearance of the scheme that has already been approved. Thank you.
Right, anybody else wish to speak to this? Councillor Fraser?
Thank you, madam chairman, very briefly. I would like to suggest that we stick to the red line we established last time. Things have got bigger. Utility room, the garage has got bigger, it's got higher. When we said previously this should be the end of it, we should mean it, and we should say that again. I don't think this house, had it been proposed in this manner on day one, we would have said no, and the inspector might have agreed with us. We should stop giving ground and abide by the previous permission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fraser. Does anybody else want to speak before I take councillor Hyman again? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I personally find this improvement by moving the garage back adjacent to the garage of number 29, I think it's a whole lot better. I like the design of the house, I think it's quite outstanding, and for me, it's on basically the same footprint as the previous allowed application, so my thoughts are an improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman.
Thanks, just to pick up on that quickly, I think everybody does agree with that actually, that it is better to move it back, but should the price of that be having to have a building that's two or three times as big, I mean, a two-bedroom, two, two-bed to three and twice the height? So obviously, if they wanted to, if the applicant wanted to bring forward an application which moved that garage, I'm quite sure there'd be no complaint whatsoever from the neighbours, but that's not, we shouldn't confuse it and be buying that improvement with other things which impact on the AGLV and other properties in other ways. But if I may get back to the issue of whether we have a correct universal undertaking here. If you look at the first application that was granted consent on this, there was a draft universal undertaking in that, in which the applicant filled it in with five-plus bedrooms, that's the level highest amount we can charge, five-plus, so five bedrooms or more, and that's the highest amount. Now, when it came forward and actually got consented, it was for four bedrooms, so it's not the highest, this is for four. It says on page 49, this figure is based on the proposal being a four-bedroom house, which isn't the highest, and with the greatest respect to the officers who have said the opposite, I know I'm right on this, I do apologise for interrupting, but I know I'm right and I don't want us to head off down the wrong direction. I do apologise otherwise to the officers, chairman.
Right, so, no, no, let me stop you again, because you have just said that you are right and therefore the officer is wrong. Can you just turn your microphone off, please? Because I want reassurance from the officer that the advice he has given is correct.
Madam chairman, my planning colleagues tell me that the universal undertaking exacts the maximum amount for the bedrooms involved in the development. I have no, had no notice of this detailed question from councillor Hyman whatsoever. Madam chairman, my advice to committee is given on a bona fide basis, based on what colleagues have said to me. This very detailed question, I've had no notice of, madam chairman. While my colleagues are looking at the relevant SBA tables, whether we can get 100% clarity on this...
Thank you, Mr Devlin.
But just raising questions like this, madam chairman, of such a level of detail, when the member could have given notice of a question or seen officers in advance, it's unhelpful to committee deliberations and lead to this level of uncertainty.
Thank you, Mr Devlin. I think you're absolutely right, I think it's disgraceful, we've got plenty of time to speak to officers before, and I certainly don't think a slanging match in a public meeting does any of us any good whatsoever. Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much, chairman. We appear to be going round in ever-decreasing circles, and just when we think we've reached the point of where we can put the recommendation, councillor Hyman comes in with another convoluted question, which quite frankly, in this part of the chamber, we can't hear. Therefore, I now move the motion be now put.
Thank you, councillor Frost, do you have a second or I take it?
Madam chairman, I'm happy to second it.
Do we need a vote or just to go?
No, do you want to?
Right, the only thing I was going to suggest we do, just to check that we do have all the conditions that we all want as revised, so something about windows added in addition to the Class A and B, is that, yeah, that's all taken as read, is it? The traffic management plan, did we decide to put that back in? Put that back in. And the thorny issue of the word primary, are we leaving that in because we have to?
On the basis of what councillor Hyman has said, and in order to move things forward, we would recommend the removal of the word primary and leave it as habitable accommodation. If the applicants are unhappy with that wording, they can come back at a later stage to amend that condition and we can assess that at that time.
Right, so we have a recommendation, and I'd like to move to that recommendation now, please. We've got, how many new conditions are we putting back? One, two, three? Are we combining these? One new and two amended, right. So subject to amended conditions five and eight, and a new condition nine, and the informative's 1 to 6, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
And those against granting permission?
Two.
And any abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much indeed. We don't need a recommendation B, so thank you very much, everybody, let's move on to B4. This is Chris Turner.
Sorry, Chris, when you're ready. The item brought before commiserate is the agent as a councillor. The site's located east of Whitepost Lane. Whitepost Lane is a residential lane. Pine View Cottage is a two-storey, white-painted brick dwelling. The existing house can be seen in these images. Photo A in the top left shows the rear of the dwelling. Photo B shows the rear of the dwelling, including the existing dormer window which wasn't visible on the first photograph. Photo C on the bottom left shows the existing eastern elevation, and photo D shows the existing western elevation. In both C and D, you can see the existing rear extension. The proposed extension would be relocated to the rear of the dwelling. It would project from the rear elevation by four metres and would have a width of 5.2 metres. It'd have an eaves height of 4.3 metres and a ridge height of 6.5. The roof light would be located on the eastern elevation and would measure 0.8 metres in width by 0.4 metres in height. The extension would have provided additional dining space on the ground floor and a bedroom and en suite on the first floor. I draw your attention to the update sheet. Two amended plans were received, amended errors on the original application. These related to existing elevations. Therefore, in light of the amended plans received, it's proposed that condition one be amended with the updating drawing numbers. In conclusion, officers consider that the extension would appear acceptable and there would no harmful impacts on the amenities of adjoining occupiers. The massive judgment are the impact on residential amenity and the impact on visual amenity. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Chris. Can I ask you, and Barry, if you'd just turn your mics on? That's great, thanks very much. Councillor Ward, do you wish to start?
Yes, thank you, madam chairman, this is in my ward. It's a large house in a large plot. I note that the town council has no objections. I also note that there are no representations from neighbours. I've had no irate phone calls and I've had no request to look at it in my email box. To me, it appears a perfectly acceptable extension to a large building on a large plot, it's not close to any other residential houses, so to me, I am very much inclined to be in favour of it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ward. Does anybody else wish to speak to this application? In which case, shall we move straight to the recommendation? It's the same as, oh, it's got to be there, thank you very much. So the recommendation has been slightly revised, that permission be granted, subject to amended condition one that Chris referred to, and conditions two to four as set out on the agenda report. And is the one informative or I just made that up? Right, well, with all those conditions, amended condition one, conditions two to four, that permission be granted, can I see all those in favour of granting permission?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you, members, and I must apologise again, officers, I should not have allowed that to happen, and I can assure you that the vast majority of members are grateful for all the help and support you get. Thank you very much indeed, it's been a long evening.